Call the meeting to order, call the roll.
Trustee Fenton.
Here.
Trustee Dodge.
Here.
Trustee Guerra.
Here.
Trustee Rusick.
Here.
Trustee Calandrello.
Here.
Trustee Carroll.
Here.
Mayor Pico.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of January 21st, 2019 regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Fenton.
Move to approve the minutes of the January 21st, 2019 regular meeting.
Second.
Are there any changes? Call the roll.
Trustee Fenton.
Aye.
Trustee Guerra.
Aye.
Trustee Dodge.
Aye.
Trustee Rusick.
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello.
Aye.
Trustee Carroll.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Approval of January 28th, 2019 special meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Guerra.
I move to approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees' Special Meeting of January 28th, 2019.
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Trustee Guerra.
Aye.
Trustee Carroll.
Aye.
Trustee Fenton.
Aye.
Trustee Dodge.
Aye.
Trustee Rusick.
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Bridge Teen Center Chef's Auction Raffle License.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Calandrello.
I move to approve issuing a raffle license to Bridge Teen Center to conduct an raffle at their chef auction event at Civil Lake Country Club on Thursday, March 7, 2019.
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Trustee Calandrello.
Aye.
Trustee Rusick.
Aye.
Trustee Fenton.
Aye.
Trustee Dodge.
Aye.
Trustee Guerra.
Aye.
Trustee Carroll.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Lions Club Presentation.
You have the floor.
Good evening, trustees and mayor. I'm Steve Anton from the Orland Park Lions. It's become a custom for us every year to come and ask the trustees and the mayor for their blessings for our upcoming Orland Days this year, May 27th through June 2nd, held at the Metro Lot on 153rd Street. With all village licenses and certificates and insurance will be covered as it usually is. It's our largest fundraiser for the club for the year, and we have just come before the board to explain that our plans are that, and with the blessings of the village, we look forward to another successful year. I believe with 45-plus years that the Orland Park Lions have been hosting the Orland Days event. So, Mr. Mayor, that's my report.
Thank you very much. I think you guys have done a great job for a long time, so I don't have any issues. I don't know, I don't think anyone else does either, so.
Stay forward, staff.
Yep. Looking forward to next year as well.
Thank you very much. See you in the tavern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Consent agenda?
Consent agenda. Item A: Payroll for January 25th, 2019. Item B: Accounts payable from January 22nd, 2019 through February 4th, 2019. Approval. Item C: Harris Enterprise Resource Planning, annual software maintenance. Item D: Granicus three-year contract extension for Legistar, Legistar Insight. Government Transparency Suite in Granicus and Coding Appliance Software Renewal Subscriptions. Item E: Upgrade of Village Network Core Switching Equipment. Item F: Sportsplex Indoor Soccer Field Replacement Proposal. Item G: Disposal of Village Equipment. Equipment from Public Works Department, Orland Health and Fitness and Police Department Ordinance. Item H: Annual Traffic Signal Maintenance for Village State-County Roadways Proposal. Item I: Census Water Meter Related Products. Item J: Maintenance and Upgrade of Harlem Avenue Streetlights from 151st to 159th, including Underground Wiring and Controller Replacement and the Addition of Holiday Lighting Circuits. Proposal to Increase Scope of Work. Item K: Elevated Tank Five Fiber Duct Extension Proposal. Item L: Hay and Associates Plan Review and Landscape Architect Services 2019 Contract Adjustment. Item M: Orland Park Nature Center Upland Design Additional Services Number Four. Item N: S.B. Friedman Development Advisors Proposal Downtown Main Street Triangle Master Development Agreement Addendum One. Item O: Phase One Design Engineering for Multi-Use Path Along 167th Street, Wolf Road to 104th Avenue. Item P: Land Development Code Amendments. Item Q: Adoption of the 2017 NEC Electrical Code Ordinance. Item R: Adoption of FDA Health Code and Village Amendments Ordinance. Anything on the consent?
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Rusick.
I move to approve items A through R of the consent agenda.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Rusick.
Aye.
Trustee Dodge.
Aye.
Trustee Fenton.
Aye.
Trustee Guerra.
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello.
Aye.
Trustee Carroll.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
So after a few long meetings, this one's a relatively short one. We have some folks to speak. Mike Halloran, and a reminder you have three minutes.
My name is Mike Halloran, one of the owners from Orland Bowl. I never expected to be this early, so thank you. I'm here tonight to request a permission to continue parking cars from the Apple Chevrolet dealership. I'd like to explain the situation so you all have an understanding. My lot is 300 feet wide by 850 deep, so not a usual shape. There's not too many that are that deep. The, to the east, and the area that they use is the last 100 to 110 feet of that 850 that we're talking about. Now, to the east of that piece of property at the very back is a water retention. To the south is the Crystal Creek Condos who have a buffer of garages, and to the west is the road that leads back to the condos. So it's pretty isolated back there. Now, I wouldn't be here asking for this if I didn't have enough parking myself giving this up. It is my understanding through the ordinances that I need, based on the size of my building, 235 spots. I have 280 giving up that area to Apple Chevrolet. Now, you may be asking why, you know, have all these cars? I mean, let's look at the situation here. I'm giving them, I have a lot that's paved that we're parking cars, of which the original intention of this area was. It's blacktoped, there's no campers, boats, RVs. It is strictly brand-new Chevy automobiles. Now, you know, one would say, "Well, Apple Chevrolet, just order less cars." And I don't know if you're aware of this, the dealership doesn't get to order cars. The manufacturer just sends them. They don't really care how many you have, what kind of space you have. It is up to the dealers to just sell them. So, no matter what happens here with me, these cars are going somewhere, okay? They're not going away. They're going to be parked somewhere. Now, I've been parking, there's been cars back there for in excess of 10 years, okay, with the knowledge of previous administrations. I had worked with Apple, excuse me, with, my first one was the Toyota dealership when they renewed or remodeled their place, and then building the Lexus, excuse me, the, yeah, the Lexus dealership, and then Mercedes and the BMW dealership when they built the new one out on 159th and Wolf Road. In the last several years, it's all been Apple. Now, I've developed a relationship with John, know him fairly well. He's, you know, been active in the community here. You view him maybe as Tinley Park, but when you sit between Orland Bowl and Orland Toyota.
One minute.
Many people think that he's, you know, in Orland. The, some would say, you know, 10 years you've been there, you've been lucky. Well, I view it as 10 years, and nobody knows, nobody cared. I didn't cause any problems to the village. Safety-wise, I have a, John has put in a gate. He goes between his property and mine to park those cars. There's no cars going out on 159th Street. Say no to this issue, and you now have added traffic to the street. They're going to be making left-hand turns out on 159th. I've talked to a few people in the villages, in the offices here. They say, "Well, we have to keep, you know, continuity." I've read the ordinance. I'm not an attorney, but nowhere does it say the first guy and then every, the second guy is going to be the same way. I assume, and I would like to be, how do you want to say, looked at, based upon my situation. A piece of property that's very back, built for automobiles, houses automobiles only, helping both myself financially. Financially, this is very important to me and my family. I wouldn't be here otherwise. John just got the award for Time Magazine's Dealership of the Year. He's a man that cares about his business, and how does he do this? Active in the community and providing good service, selling his cars. I help him sell those cars by being there, close to him. And that's my story, and I'm sticking to it. Any questions, anyone?
Thank you very much. I think we have one more person to talk on this issue, so I'm sure we'll have questions, but we should let the other person speak too. David Sassen?
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, my name is David Sassen. I represent the Apple dealership. John Elferovich, who's the owner, is sitting behind, and I just want to introduce him. He's here because it's also a great concern to him. Having represented the auto industry for many years in Orland Park, there's a number of things that I've learned, and that's why I'm here today on behalf of my client. We've been a resident using this lot, which we believe has no other purpose, for parking cars in a parking lot. There have been no complaints. It's worked very well for everybody. We believe the village, people in the village have known about it, the staff has known about it, and we're rather surprised that now it became an issue. We understand that there's a code and what the code says, but the real issue is the cooperation between villages. Orland Park dealerships park cars in the adjoining villages. Here, it's a Tinley Park dealership adjacent that's parking a car in the Orland Park District. The village, and we worked on with the village to have a plan for parking the excess cars, and frankly, that plan leaves a lot to be desired for the dealers. We think that a cooperation is needed between Tinley Park, Orland Park, and Orland Hills for the benefit, not of a particular dealer, but the dealership community in general. And as of now, we haven't found a, any opportunity that works for the dealers and works for the village, but we think there is one there. It's our understanding that all of the dealers, regardless of what village they're in, contribute to the entire community. People come to Chevrolet, and they buy Lexuses, and they buy Fords, and they buy other cars, and the same thing happens. We have a very vibrant auto community, but that community is threatened by their own success and what the manufacturers do to these dealers. It was mentioned by Mike that they don't ask to send cars. That's essentially true. They send the cars they want to send, and it's the dealership's responsibility to sell them. In conclusion, please keep in mind, and I encourage all the trustees and the mayor to go over there and look at this lot. It's not hurting anybody. There's no other use for it. It's been there a long time. It backs up to garages, and if there's a case, and it's, and there's a 10-year history here. If there's a case for continuing this kind of cooperation, this would be the case in my view. Thank you. Appreciate the time.
Are there any comments or questions on this issue? Trustee Guerra.
I would ask our staff, have there been complaints, issues, problems?
Is it on now?
Okay, there we go.
Mouse working. That off switch works great.
Yeah. Trustee Guerra, this came about as a result of a recent planning commission meeting that was held, where we had one of our planning commissioners inquire at a public meeting and ask staff to look into this because of this illegal storage that was occurring at this particular piece of property. As in the complaint that the village receives, we, our staff is obligated to follow up on that, which we did. We went out, my staff went out and spoke to both the owners of Orland Bowl, as well as Joe and myself actually met with the nice gentleman, the owner of Apple Chevrolet as well. And this is, this is not permitted by code. The way the code is currently written is outdoor storage as a primary use is prohibited in our major commercial zoning districts. It is allowed in manufacturing, and that was a recent code change that was made a few years ago, when this village board decided that they knew that there was a need to allow storage of vehicles for Orland Park dealerships. And the code was changed to provide outdoor storage as a primary use in our manufacturing zoning districts, which is what Mr. Sassen was referring to. That code was probably made, I think, three or four years ago. We actually have a number of our dealerships who have purchased property in our manufacturing zoning districts to allow for storage of their inventory off-site when they don't have enough room onsite for their, at their dealerships. So, really, the issue is, is that when you use an existing parking lot as the primary use, as outdoor storage, it just is not allowed. And in fact, just a few months ago, we had another property in Orland Park, which was a local car dealership in Orland Park, who was doing that along Harlem Avenue on a parking lot. And my staff was made aware of it, and we went out and we told them they had to relocate the cars. So, in terms of being consistent in enforcement of our codes, this is what has happened in this particular case. And the only other thing I would add is, if you go and you look at Tinley Park, they actually do allow this in their vacant parking lots on Long Harlem Avenue, and a good case would be the Kmart, the vacant Kmart in Tinley Park has about 1,041 cars sitting there right now that are utilized for excess overflow of the dealerships as well.
Is this different in any way in that it's not the primary use? The bowling alley is the primary use on the site?
No, the way the code is written is you can have an accessory outdoor storage, but it has to be tied to a primary use such as a dealership. So in this particular case, the bowling alley, while the bowling alley is a primary use, which is commercial in the zoning district, because it's for the stories of another type of use, which is a car dealer, is not permitted.
Mayor Pico.
Trustee Dodge.
Could you guys happen to call up an aerial, or is that too much at the last minute?
Oh.
All right, well.
Yeah.
Google it, and you can see where it was.
All right.
Yeah.
Well, if we're having a topic like this, we should probably think about aerials. They're always kind of helpful to, for everyone in the audience to see this as well. I guess I'm kind of having a hard, I get the code, and thank you for the explanation, and I think I understand what problems we were trying to solve. I'm having a real hard time figuring out who's harmed in this situation. I mean, I certainly wouldn't mind if Apple annexed into Orland Park, but I don't think that's going to happen. I'm kidding, of course. But, you know, there's got to be a way to work through this. I mean, there's sort of a little bit of a live and let live here. So, I, I'm not exactly sure what the solve is, but codes are changeable if we're reasonable about it.
Mayor, could I just, one more word?
Sure.
Two ideas. One is, we kind of maybe disagree a little bit with the staff. The primary use of this property, it's one pin, is a bowling alley. That is the primary use of the property, and we think that this might fall, this could, and of course, you'll talk to your attorney, and he'll give his opinion. An attorney's different. But, the other solution, Mr. Trustee Dodge, and I think we'd be willing to do this, is if we had a sense from the board that you feel that you'd be sympathetic, we'd be happy to file a request for variation to use this property or special use, to use a portion of the property delineated for that purpose.
Mayor Pico, if I'm not mistaken, this parking lot was there long before they started storing cars on it, correct?
Right.
I mean, if I'm not mistaken, if his math is correct and memory serves, it's an oversized parking lot, given the codes for the use, correct?
That is correct.
And you got a local Orland Park business getting some economic benefit to let a couple of Chevys sit there and think about it.
That, I don't disagree with that. I think the concern that staff has is that if you allow it here, where else will you allow it? Because you could have Home Depot, you could have Lowe's, you could have any surplus parking that's not utilized on a regular basis, and then you're turning it into an alternate use for storage.
No, I, I get that, but that's, there's nothing necessarily written in stone, in my opinion, about our codes, right? We're trying to adapt to a situation. So, a sea of cars where that building used to be at 159th Street, 100, on Harlem, right, where Republic Bank is, they still may be the owners.
Right, Intercontinental.
Yeah, that's kind of a different animal. You know, parking some cars in the back part of a parking lot that I can't imagine any of your customers ever thinking about, and if none of the residents are off-put by this, I, so I guess I don't just put an opinion on the board. I don't have a problem thinking about this. You want to constrain it, but this doesn't feel like it's harming anybody either, this particular case.
Trustee Fenton.
This goes to staff. If Time sold that piece of property to Apple Chevrolet, although the property's in the village of Orland Park, could he then park his cars there? Well, he would have to subdivide it, and the challenge, the challenge that you have is that you have a piece of property that is not in, Apple's not in Tinley, and then they would have a subdivided freestanding parking lot, and the primary use of that would be outdoor storage and the subdivided parcel, which still would be, you'd have to change the code to allow that. So then what you're allowing is for a piece of property to be subdivided for another use that would be under separate ownership for the primary use of outdoor storage. That's adjacent to the car dealership, where the one on Harlem, there was no car dealership there. They were just randomly parking cars wherever. So, I go along with Trustee Dodge, especially, I mean, I know exactly where you're talking about at your, at your business, but Trustee Calandrello pulled it up on Google Map here, and nobody sees the cars, nobody even knows they're back there, and I'm sure everybody thinks it, unlike the person who complained about it from the planning commission, but I'm guessing everybody else thinks it's part of Apple Chevrolet. So, I go along with Trustee Dodge. I'd be willing to look at this as something, as an exception to the rule, I guess.
I guess, I guess the question becomes, go ahead, Trustee Rusick.
Oh, just one question, just so I'm clear. So, if this was one of our Orland Park car dealers parking their cars there, it would be a permitted use?
No.
If it was on the same parcel, it would be. If a separate standalone parcel, no, it would not be permitted.
Under no circumstances.
Under no circumstances, in BIZ or core zoning.
Okay.
And manufacturing, yes.
I thought there were separate standalone parking that our car dealers were using within Orland Park.
They are, but it's the manufacturing zoning district.
Got it. Okay.
So, Chairman.
Trustee Carroll.
Yeah, the way I see it, there are two problems. One is easier solved than the other. The first one is the fact that we allow Orland Park car dealerships to park cars off-site in Orland Park.
And only Orland Park.
Right. I personally am okay with following Mr. Sassen's logic and saying I'd be willing to revisit that ordinance to say, "Okay, it's a neighboring municipality, and they want to park in the manufacturing and zoning district. Afford them the same opportunity for off-site parking that we're allowing our car dealerships," in the spirit of cooperation between neighboring villages, like Mr. Sassen said. The second issue is whether you can park off-site in a commercial district, which is what we're talking about here today. That one, I have a little bit more of a concern about a slippery slope issue here, to try and avoid what happened on Harlem, in our part of Harlem, in our village, that we spent quite a bit of time. I remember your inspectors working on that for quite some time, getting that cleaned up. In fact, I know several police officers that were working on that that have since retired, long since retired before that got resolved. I would maybe think if we'd send it back to staff to look into it, a very narrow exception if it's contiguous to the dealership, which, but it wasn't, and that one on Harlem, that was, they were on, what, 70th Court, the dealership we had a problem with?
Yeah.
Right. So it wasn't contiguous, it was two blocks away.
Right.
So I would maybe be willing to consider changing that if it was contiguous to the dealership. But that would be, it'd have to be very narrowly drafted, because otherwise we are, I think, Mr. Sassen, with all due respect, looking at a slippery slope situation. So.
I understand. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Calandrello.
I think I just want to add that I think we could work out some kind of situation. I know Mr. Sassen's a very learned attorney. We have a great staff. We could figure something out. It's a local business. I know it's in Tinley Park, but the whole 159th, we work together. So, I feel like we do something, if they just put a roof on it, I know that really, if they put a roof on it, it wouldn't be outdoor anymore, correct? If they put a banner, you know, a...
Then it would be considered indoor storage. So, we can certainly come, try and work with, which again is not permitted.
Okay, I know, as I'm saying, I'm just thinking of creative ways.
You'd have to subdivide. You'd have to create two separate lots and then have two different zonings over that. So, we can work with Ken and Dennis to see what options are coming up with, if that's the direction we get from the board, from policy direction, but it's not as simple as it may seem. So, we want to make sure we have parity. We want to make sure that we have consistency and that we're not opening the door without thinking through all the unintended consequences of that.
And I completely understand. My father's worked in the auto since the 90, auto industry since the 90s, so I know exactly the issues they have with over cars and figuring out how to put them. And if you go to Hodgkins, they have that same issue. Any major car dealership has those hubs, so I understand that.
Thank you. We'll work with the staff to find a good common sense solution that addresses your concerns, but also ours.
So, any other comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Guerra.
I would only add that not only does a car dealer have cars, he doesn't have a place to go. You've got parking that you have no use for. So, there should be, I'm confident our staff has a way they can work this out.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the board? Okay, so, I've done a lot of retention visits with car dealers, and this is a recurring issue with car dealers of having places to park. I agree with most of the board's sentiment that this isn't harming anyone. It's been there for a long time. Let's figure out a way. But I think we do need to think about the slippery slope. We do need to think about the unintended consequences. The other thing we need to do is we need to figure out, is there something we can do that would benefit the other car dealerships as well in similar circumstances where it's not a nice or where it's not a problem? So, is there a way to put it, is there a way to make the, and I don't know the answer to this, but where it's required to be in the back. It's required, you know, that we put certain requirements on it that narrows the focus so that if this circumstance is somewhere else along 159th Street or Harlem, where there's unused parking, where people can get an economic benefit from it. And oh, by the way, I'd rather see them going a block or two rather than going all the way across to our manufacturing district and driving. I think they would too. You know, it's just good for everybody. So, why don't we look at that? I know, this is the first time that we've actually had an existing issue. It's been an issue of more like, we're looking at this, and I've constantly told, I've consistently told every dealer, you know, work together with the other dealers, and I'm happy to sit down, I'm happy to sit down with Tinley Park and Orland Hills to try and come up with a solution to this. None of them have taken me up on that. So, now we have a real-life situation. More than happy to try and solve this problem because I think we agree that this is, there should be a solution here.
Thank you.
Andy Barucki.
Hi, Andy Barucki. Village, I've been in this village for 42 years, and I just wanted to discuss the parts of the meeting from January 7th, and I did want to go over it in the last meeting, but of course, you know what happened at the last meeting. The first item was bids. Who doesn't get more than one bid when purchasing a high-end item? I recently went to four stores in the village to purchase a refrigerator. Why? Because I wanted to get the best deal. When Mayor Pico was the only person to question Joe and his staff regarding an over, I'm getting, I'm giving just an amount, because I can't remember what the amount was, a million-dollar bid, one bid, that was given to the one company who bid on it, I was shocked that not one of you trustees didn't question why only one bid was taken. To give the business to the one business who makes the bid does not seem reasonable nor ethical to me. So, thank you, Mayor Pico, for questioning this item and recommending that more than one bid be sought after going forward. The next item was ethics. Trustee Carroll asked Mayor Pico if he knew who was making robo calls. He should come forward with who was doing it. Although Mayor Pico has denied any involvement in these allegations, Trustee Carroll has insisted that, and I quote from our local newspaper, "We have seen in the last year and a half behavior that has transcended..." and a half behavior that has transcended all norms of ethical behavior in the past." Although Trustee Carroll says he's not pointing fingers, another statement he made to the newspaper, and I quote, "It does not take too many brain cells to rub together to figure out who directly or indirectly is behind these robo calls." To me, that is pointing fingers. So, I ask all of you trustees, if any of you know who is sending out these robo calls, come forward with who is doing it. You are so right about one thing, Trustee Carroll. In the past year and a half, we, the people, have seen behavior that has transcended all norms of ethical behavior in the past. Ethics? What about when you trustees were going to grant previous mayor a great pension and $150,000 for going to full-time mayor? There were over 300 residents in the building, some hanging from the rafters up there, very upset that it went to a vote, after hearing from many residents that this should not pass, or it should go on to, to the ballot for residents to vote. You did not listen to the people. One by one, it was aye, aye, aye. Comments after that by some residents was, see you at the polls, and guess what? It was people over politics. Now, there is mention of changing it back to part-time, which, if that's what it is, so be it. But I just wonder, if the former mayor was still in, would it be even discussed? The time has come to get down to business, stop this ridiculous bickering with Mayor Pecow, move on to what is important in this village, the progress, achievements, and problems of the village of Orland Park. After all, isn't that what you were elected to do? Enough is enough. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Maureen Wentz.
Hi, my name is Maureen Wentz. I've been a resident in Orland Park for 52 years, and I'm happy to have the opportunity here tonight to comment on some wonderful services that the building that I live in just received from this village. Last Thursday, in our 12-unit building, one of the upstairs units had a huge water break that ran down through the whole building. And I am here to tell you how pleased I was with the services from the different departments in this village. Bill Kazmerzich, if I'm saying it right.
Kazmerzich.
Was the first officer to show up. Then the fire department came, then the water department came, and it was Jamie Kukler from Plumbing Inspector. Anyhow, they were so considerate, so efficient, and solved the problem that it was unbelievable. And believe me, it was a big problem. The water was leaking from the upstairs unit into the second and third, the second and first floor unit, like you had turned a fire hose on. And they came in and immediately started assessing the problem, turned off the water for the whole building. We mentioned where we thought it was coming from, and they had to have the fire department knock the door down, because nobody's lived there for five years. Went in and shut the water off in that unit, and then turned it back on for the whole building, and right away had discovered it was a leak in that unit. But again, I just want to comment on the efficiency, the professionalism, the courtesy that we received while all of this mess was going on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
Brian Weaver, no dogger in the fight over the parking of cars by the bowling alley. But as an appraiser for over 30 years, I've seen this a million times. Years ago, I was appraising a piece of property up Frankfurt, it must be a house. There was a 3,000 square foot furniture factory sitting on it. I said, "How'd you pull that off?" They spot-zoned it. So, carve out 40 or 50 spaces, you don't have to have a separate pin unless you really think you need to do that, and spot-zone that area meets and bounds. There you go.
Any other comments from the public? Board comments. Trustee Carroll.
First of all, I want to tell the Public Works Department, who isn't here tonight, but we had a water main break on our street late at night, Sunday night. Sorry, we had a water main break on our street late Sunday night. Public Works Department came out, notified every resident on our cul-de-sac about the water main break, worked well into the late hours of the night to get it fixed, did a great job, and I know we're going to have a lot of that with the ups and downs of the temperatures, so just want to thank staff on that. Just briefly, as to the bid issue that was just brought up. My issue on that, at that meeting, was that we get an iPad that gets loaded on Friday around noon with all the background information for every motion, every project that's going to be discussed at the following Monday night's board meeting. I just went back through our January 7th notes, and on that main pump station, which was the issue you were talking about, it's a $1.7 million bid, we did advertise it for bid. We have a service and a system we belong to, where we broadcast it throughout the Midwest, sometimes even larger scope than that, to try and get people to, to bid on every project that we're trying to, to put out. We also advertise it on our village's website. Trade publications, when necessary, we take very substantial steps to bid out these projects. On this particular project, 21 companies downloaded all the specifications for that job. Four of them were emailed directly by our staff, who knew that they did that kind of work. We then had a pre-bid meeting, hoping that we'd have a lot of contractors come out to it, to look at the project, and have in-person contact with the specs. Only two contractors showed up for that pre-bid meeting. And then when the clerk's office and/or finance office opened up the bid on the, the final day, only one person had bid it. All of that was in our iPads Friday at noon. We knew that all. So, my only comment that night was that I'm all for any board member asking questions of staff when we have something we don't know, some clarification we need, but we knew all of that by noon on Friday. We, the staff did their very best, they explained it in several paragraphs, what they went through, to try and get that project bid. They did everything they could do, and as an aside, when they interviewed people from the industry, found out that this industry's become much less competitive. There aren't very many people doing this work anymore. That's why we ended up with one bid. But they did everything they were supposed to do. So, just like you going four places, look at a washer or dryer, we had 25 people looking at this. Unfortunately, only one wanted to bid it. So, that was my only comment that night, is that we knew all that at noon on Friday. So, to cast dispersions or raise a suspicion, accusing the staff of not doing their job, that's not what happened here. If it was, all seven of us would have been holding them accountable for it. They did exactly what they were supposed to do. Unfortunately, although 25 people looked at this, and hundreds more were allowed to look at it, only one person bid it. Just wanted to make that clear.
Trustee Gera.
I would like to congratulate our village staff on the work they did during the polar vortex, to serve the residents under such circumstances. Maureen Wentz had her story of what she went through with pipes bursting, I think we all saw things, and hopefully we saw the better side of people's personalities, too. I think people really responded to each other. And then I'd like to congratulate especially our Recreation Department staff on another successful, sold-out, sorry Danny, I went, I love seeing this, the Cinderella Ball Saturday night at the Cultural Center. What a treat to see these kids, you know, boys and girls, and they're dressed up, and it's a date night with their folks, and they're just having a wonderful time. So, congratulations to staff, it was another great event. That's it.
Trustee Ruzik.
Just to the comment on the bid, Andy. So, most of you who come, come to the 7:00 PM meeting, the full board meeting. That item was on the Public Works Committee, which would have been the two weeks before that. And it was at that committee that Trustee Dodge, myself, and Trustee Fenton did question that, and we did talk about, and we did make a commitment to, on our next agenda, to talk about bidding in the future, and how to avoid this again. So, there was discussion about it. I didn't feel the need to bring it up again at the board level. Okay? Just wanted to clarify that.
Trustee Calandrello.
Just want to add the same kudos to, from Trustee Gera's comments about the recent programming of Parks and Rec. And I got in the manager notes, this is a very interesting point, is that, so for our special events, special rec, and cultural events, we have a total of 410 volunteers through these events. So, that means non-staff hours, you know, high school kids getting public service hours, adults helping out, and of, because of that volunteerism, I guess, that saves the village more than $55,000. So, I just want to, first of all, give kudos to our volunteers, our citizens, for giving up so much of their times for events. So, for example, the event we just had, the Cinderella Ball, we have, we had almost 20 volunteers. We had 100 volunteers for Special Rec at the Orland Days, and I'm not sure if that counts lions or not. So, it just, it, it shows that we have great people in the village, great high school, great kids, I'm assuming the most of them are kids, maybe they're adults, and they're also saving the village some money, especially when, especially when our budgets keep getting shrinking, 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 particularly in events that we always, we have been seeing cuts in recent, and we're coming, we're coming back strong. I just want to highlight that volunteerism and thank those people publicly. Probably should do more, but that's a great thing, great feeling, great, good, good story to pick up. Thanks.
Trustee Fenton.
Just to go to Andy's point that she brought up about the bids, being chairman of Public Works, one of the things we sit down, and I sit down with John Ingram, who's director of Public Works, we go over, and he knows not to bring anything that doesn't, that they haven't gone out for bid. We're not sitting up here saying that, you know, pick one person and that's the only person we're going to go to. So many things that have to do with Public Works are so specialized, that there are only maybe one or two companies out there, but they also have to meet all the bid specifications in order to even be awarded the bid. So, as Trustee Ruzik stated, all of that was discussed at the 6 o'clock meeting, John and I had discussed it prior to the meeting. So, if you ever, anybody ever has any questions about that, they can contact whichever chairman is involved with that particular committee, and we can go over it with you. One of the reasons we don't do it at the board level is for time-consuming. There, again, we just had a consent agenda, it's already a quarter to eight, so. We do go through everything, staff knows very well that everything goes out to bid, and as Trustee Carroll said, we have many, many avenues where the bids go out, but there, again, sometimes it's just very specific to one particular item, so that. I'd also like to give kudos to staff, not only Public Works Parks, but the entire village of Orland Park staff, for everything that they did do through this recent polar vortex and cold snap, with our warming centers being open, and I know people, if there was a phone call made for help, somebody was there right away. So, please pass on kudos to, I was sending text messages out, and they did a great job, and also like to thank all the residents for adhering to, it's cold outside, stay home.
Trustee Dodge.
Just a couple of comments. So, again, thanks to, for staff for doing what they do, appreciate that. And then the last two points are basically a celebration of democracy. So, regarding the, the bid, just to make sure that we complete the story, since it's now officially on the public record, that it was brought up as an issue, as all the comments that you heard from Kathy, from Trustee Carroll, Trustee Ruzik, is, is absolutely true. But there's one other piece that I want to make sure that we understand. So, as we went through the process to get that bid, and I've heard some people say politically that, you know, hey, it was a no-bid contract, and I know people in the electrical business, why don't we have them come out and bid it? It was a specialized part, and if, as we went through the process of 300 people looked at the bid, a much smaller handful actually took a look at the bid closely, a few showed up, the whole, you've got the funnel. A custom part, if it failed, it would take six months to get a new one. If it failed, all the water pumps in Orland Park would be offline. Let me say that again. If it failed, all the water pumps would be offline. So, yeah, we were disappointed, we didn't get more bids, because who doesn't like more bids, because then you're competing on price? Love that. But, the risk to the village's water supply system was serious and real, hence we went down that pathway. So, all the comments that my colleagues pointed out, it's important to put that contextual fact in there. And you also brought up around the, the whole issue of the, of the pay. I don't know if enough people in Orland Park remember this, but I worked for free for seven years while I was on this board, and I simply refused to take the village of Orland Park paycheck. So, if there's any issues with anybody sitting in the mayor's seat who is uncomfortable morally or intellectually with taking the $150,000 a year paycheck, simply cut it back. Fill out the letter, give it to staff, and say, "Cut my pay." And most importantly, about the pensions, and I want to make sure I make this point as crystal clear as humanly possible, if you want to know why that vote carried with it a pension for someone like Mayor McLaughlin, it's because of Illinois law, which is dictated by Springfield. I voted for that, I'm going to say it again, I voted for that because I felt whoever was in that chair needed to put 40 hours a week, and that's called out for in the ordinance, near real-time equivalent of a full-time job focused on economic development. Not operations, not running around here being executive, economic development, in addition to being technically the chairman of a board of directors position. So, I was more than happy to cast that vote, to whoever sat in that chair was fully compensated for 40 hours a week focused on economic development. If you, like me, are upset with the fact that it came along with a tag-along pension, talk to the guy whose office is at 65th and Pulaski, goes by the name of Speaker Madigan, because he broadly is responsible for the pension laws in the state of Illinois. So, with that, you know, you and I may disagree on this point, but welcome to Illinois, and there's the brutality of it. And further, and I'll close with, I think, a happy note, celebrating the way democracy works, I was also comfortable casting that vote, knowing full well it was controversial. Oh, I knew it. But, the referendum on that question was the election of 2017, and as you so rightfully said, the people spoke, they didn't like it. In my opinion, and it's just that, people were upset about the pension, to which I would say loud and proud again and again, take it up with the state legislature, they're the ones ruining the state of Illinois with goofy pension laws. Speech over.
So, I would like to give, pass my kudos along to Public Works for all the good, great work they've done during the snow removals. There's been a lot of them this year, and some have been challenging, and I must say, relative to last year, far fewer phone calls to the mayor's office, which, you know, sometimes we're last resort, sometimes we're not, but I think it's a pretty good indicator that they're doing a great job. Also, any, the few calls that we did get, we responded to right away, like we always do, and, and I think our residents are happy for that. Also, kudos to the first responders who were, the, the folks that were out there in the, so our, our police department, and, and the Fire Protection District for being out there in that cold. So, they were working in the cold. And then to everyone who had to respond to incidents like Mrs. Wentz, I appreciate that. With that, I'll take a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Fenton.
Move to go into executive session for, A, approval of minutes, B, appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific village employees, C, collective negotiating matters between the village and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees, and D, pending litigation against affecting or on behalf of the village, or when found by the board that such action is probable or imminent.
Second. Call roll. Trustee Fenton.
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello.
Aye.
Trustee Dodge.